He's now, he's 55 pounds. He's gonna be, or Golden's 94. Jerry Silver, she was Jerry Craig. So, this is, this is not just. Yeah, I see him. Yeah, cause he's 94 pounds, he's probably 60 now, and he's still bucking. He's gonna be there. And his, his pause. So, making the jump action. Like this one, this one I want.
Okay.
He's about 65. All the rest of them are little. And then for what, he was the only one that told us. He was twice as big as the other. The one, that's how we got him. Like that way they can play.
Is that addition?
They do.
Oh, this one's a ball of silver.
Right. She's a jumper. Only like inside.
I'm glad that's only but drawn to make her.
Yeah.
I've been there. We just moved out.
Yeah, yeah, I've been there quite a bit.
Wow, you go during the day and take it?
Sometimes.
Okay.
Yeah, sometime, if I could sneak out of them Monday through Friday, Monday and Friday at home, sometimes I try to sneak out for an hour and a half there.
I know that.
Yeah. But, uh, exactly.
I just texted my.
Couple of weeks ago, I had an old. So, she did it. Now, this one's on the.
Oh, yes.
You got it. You're not actually. Yeah, I think it's all around.
It's moving back.
Seven thirty, seven forty-five.
Today you're going fast, so just keep going. Yeah, they'll, 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 they'll stop. Then it's almost past.
I guess the, the stadium.
So, he, yeah, but when you, you just do that. He has. He wants. I'm trying to collab, collab with that thing. Now you've got some trees. So, this spring we're supposed to get together. See if we can.
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good now.
I need a medicine, I got some.
Here's the only one I showed on it. Right. I don't want you to.
I need to talk to you.
Yeah, that's all, you'll have a dog after a whole night. Do it for a while, you know? We have a bunch of kids because of the age. But, it's probably back to.
It's not a good outfit.
So, yeah.
Question.
At least you got.
Oh, we're looking forward to the baby. All of my wife, they're eating their own. Mr. Riser, are you? Busy hour? Or at least relax. How are you, Woody?
Good, hope I'm so. It's your life. It will, it will.
What? I'm getting excited, I guess. Hope for a boy. I guess from a girl, I had two girls. You're a boy and a. Distinguish the period. What I see. It's like lame now. Yeah, we'll let you borrow a 11-year-old. Yeah. It's a couple of witnesses. I didn't say, why are you looking at you? That's. I don't know. Just because. Step. Well, I mean, on the ship we did, we had 40, the city has been the longest stretch. That was all.
I don't like merciful.
I love it. I love merciful.
Hello.
I didn't feel like it there, but it was a long time. And I love that. Jake, are you ready? Other time.
You must be giving someone. Either positions or something.
That was, I think, though. Maybe they're giving. And then we stopped in this. Chain of our. I will come. No. What? No, I can't. No. Just. Boy in the council, obviously you want that. It's a. Chief. Pretty simple. I carry an upward in the primary. Well, Quickey, I don't. Just I like something up there. Quickey, go from here to here.
Because I've got a block young, but you put those number up.
Oh, is that?
Yeah. Uh, is our AV all set up? Cool.
Punch here, I guess.
Terrible, so embarrassing.
Yeah, that's, that's what we did.
It's, it's untouchable. It's never happened with a convenience sign, right?
No. The other day it was very nice. On my way into a family dinner.
Reef up. Need to go there.
Oh, so embarrassing.
It's still. Much longer. All right, everybody, we are about one minute from getting started. The second o'clock hits 30 after, we will kick things off. Good evening, thanks for joining us. Love to see all the faces. All right, clock just hit 30. Well, good evening, everybody. Uh, I've received a lot of resident input in the, in addition to listening to resident and our council. Uh, I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that there is a big football game on in an hour. But, uh, we're gonna go ahead and jump into the meeting, and we're gonna start with our pledges of allegiance.
Let us wish to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, Katie, if we can please call roll.
Schumate.
Here.
Cox.
Here.
Cosmore.
Here.
McNabb.
Here.
Molnar. Valentine.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
All right, uh, we have one absent council member and Councilman Molnar. Is there a motion to excuse Councilman Molnar?
Motion to excuse Councilman Molnar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Great, Katie, can you please call roll?
Cox.
Yes.
Cosmore.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Our next item is going to be approval of the agenda. Uh, council, uh, you should have received an email beyond the packet that is in front of you and provided previously last week by Katie. Uh, we did get a letter of resignation, uh, from Mr. Markham related to his role on planning, uh, commission and DDA. I'd like a motion to add the letter of resignation from Mr. Markham to our communications this evening, and that'll be the only modification to the agenda that I'll propose. Is there a motion to add that to our communications section?
Motion to add some.
Letter of resignation for Mr. Markham.
Resignation for Markham.
Second.
I'll second it. Go, go ahead.
Second by, uh, Councilman McNabb. Any discussion on that addition?
He's done a lot, the city been on a long time, gonna miss his experience.
I, uh, I wanna echo, uh, Councilwoman Cosmore. Uh, I wanna sincerely thank Mr. Markham, if he's watching, for an immense contribution to the City of Gibraltar through not only planning commission and DDA, but also his role in ZBA for which he'll be continuing to pursue. Uh, so, Mr. Markham, thank you for all you've done for our city. Um, and I wanna make sure that we could, uh, receive and file that today. So, thank you, council, for the, uh, addition, uh, to our agenda. Uh, so that would now be under exactly 7C on the listed communications section. Great, any further discussion? All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda with the addition to 7C?
Well, Dorothy made a motion to add it.
Great.
You moving to approve it with that addition?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
Art, do you, is this, are, are you in favor of that?
Yes.
Great, uh, Katie, can you call roll, please?
Cosmore.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Great. Uh, the next, uh, agenda topic we have is for our public. Uh, so at this time, we'd like to open up to public comment. If you could please approach the podium, make sure that green light is on for the mic and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and neighbors. Cody Dill, 13221 Leslie. I'll keep this short. Uh, during the past council election, one of the greatest things that shined through, uh, the spirited discussion we had was how neighbors came together, uh, to advance the community. I'm here to say that Downriver needs a neighbor, uh, neighborly attitude in Lansing. Uh, with that said, I want to announce my candidacy for the Republican nomination for State Representative of the 27th House District. With politics more divided than ever, I wanna go to Lansing with a good neighbor attitude, uh, and a push for policies that benefit all of Downriver. Uh, this has been near and dear to my heart. I've wanted to do this for a while. Um, I wasn't gonna distract from my duties on council, and I wasn't gonna do that while I was on council. Um, we all understand how that went. Um, but I hope that I can have our community support. Uh, and as I mentioned, I plan to keep this short. Uh, you all have my contact information. If not, please feel free to reach out, and I'd be happy to, uh, give that to you and talk at any time. Uh, and with that, uh, thank you, guys, and have a good night.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dill.
You have 100% of my support.
Exciting news for Downriver, thank you so much.
I think you'll do, I think you'll do a good job. You definitely have my support, and I've enjoyed working with you and seeing you over the last four years.
Thank you, Marsha.
Very short, Rich Fati, 31020 Island Drive. Uh, I noticed on the agenda, there is a draft legal opinion, uh, regarding the department head contracts. Will that be discussed openly tonight? And if so, will it be in not, non-legalese, uh, language so that we could understand?
Uh, the short answer is yes, uh, we can give a summary today out of respect for an absent council member this evening, uh, and the, uh, importance of the broader discussion related to legal, which was, some of which was had at the last council meeting. Um, we can touch on the recommendation we received, and that was shared with council, uh, and then a comment on the path that we see ahead, recognizing the absent member.
Very good. Uh, one last thing, is there any, uh, uh, ability for the public to have a copy of the opinion? Or is that, uh, held in, uh, privacy?
Uh, we wanna leave with transparency. I have no issue with that, assuming that Katie feels it's appropriate, and that city attorney, I'm, I'm not sure what the, uh, privacy or confidentiality considerations are around that.
And we can discuss that to waive privilege would require a majority vote of the council to waive the privilege.
So, it sounds like there's a confidentiality privilege that would require a council vote on that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fati. Any other public comment this evening? Well, uh, preliminary congratulations, Mr. Dill, and thanks for, uh, your service to Downriver in the future. And, uh, Mr. Fati, thank you for the comments, and we'll include that in our focus for tonight. If there's no further public comment this evening, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. Uh, council in front of you and in your packets, uh, I'll read all of them, uh, and then I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Point A is City Council minutes of December 11th, 2023. Point B is City Council minutes of December 18th, 2023, recognizing that wonderful day we refer to as Christmas and their shift in that date. Point C is the planning commission minutes of 1017, 2023, and point D is DDA minutes of 1017, 2023. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda in front of you?
I'll make a motion to approve, he has sent consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Great, Katie, can you call roll?
McNabb.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Cosmore.
Yes.
Great, thank you all. Uh, the next item on our agenda is communications. Uh, please keep in mind that while A and B are listed in front of you, there was a motion to add, uh, C. Uh, so A is our 33rd District Court Memorandum, 2023 Budget Adjustments. Uh, council in front of you, you can see that in your packet. Is there a motion to receive and file, uh, Communication A?
Motion to receive and file the 33rd District Court Memorandum on the budget adjustments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council, any discussion on this item? If you recall, and we can speak to it, but this is favorable for the City of Gibraltar. All right, great, uh, Katie, can you please call roll?
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Cosmore.
Yes.
McNabb.
Uh, item B under communications, uh, is our letter of resignation from Paul Lear, uh, from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there a motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to just kick off with, uh, my, our gratitude for the service on ZBA. Uh, thank you so much, Paul, for all you've done for Gibraltar through the ZBA. Uh, and with that, if there's no further discussion, Katie, can you please call roll?
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Cosmore.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, the, uh, approved addition would be item C, and that's a letter of resignation from Mr. Markham related to the Planning Commission and DDA. Uh, that was sent to you today via email from, uh, Katie. Is there a motion to receive and file the letter of resignation?
Motion to receive and file.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll make a second.
Second, any discussion? I know we mentioned this earlier, but Mr. Markham, just again, thank you so much for your dedication to our planning commission and DDA and, uh, your continued service in the ZBA. We really greatly appreciate that. Any further discussion? Katie, can you please call roll?
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Cosmore.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes. Um, at this time, I'd like to move to, uh, my report for this evening. Uh, in the agenda in front of you, you'll see the items listed A through E. Uh, I just want to start with, uh, a quick comment that we actually had the City of Rockwood and two of their council members come today to meet with us at City Hall. Just really, really productive cross-community discussions. Well, one of the items we talked about was our survey that we plan to do for all of our residents. So, we've been doing some research on that. Again, the goal was, under our new administration, to capture the voice of all our residents. Uh, what makes Gibraltar special to you, uh, and how do we preserve that? Uh, forward-looking priorities for you as a resident community, and then your feedback on hot topics, uh, that we're facing uh, as a city, uh, current and future. So, really productive, uh, cross-collaboration. I also just wanna thank our city planner, Arthur, who was there, uh, and Michael, uh, who was there, and Councilman Molnar, who was tuning into some of the meetings this afternoon, uh, and really, uh, a great cross-community collaboration specifically around grants. You know, as their new council and new mayor is coming up to speed, just like some of us are coming up to speed in local government, just a really productive opportunity to kinda lay a little land on how we think about grants and the application processes and the needs of City of Rockwood, in addition to the survey, to the grant applications, uh, so we could support and share information that'll be beneficial, uh, for a city that needs it. So, I just wanted to comment on that, and just thank the City of Rockwood for their collaboration amongst the broader collaboration we have with the communities around us. Uh, and with that, let's jump into point number A. Uh, point number A is a planning commission appointment. Uh, council, uh, in your packet, uh, you have been, uh, shared, uh, both a application from Mr. David Reiser. Mr. David Reiser is here in the meeting this evening, and Mr. Reiser, I know I've said it many a times, but thank you so much for all you've done for the city, both through council and planning commission and DDA and many other capacities. So, that's one application you have. Uh, you also have an application from Mr. Jim Bilk in front of you. Uh, and then I will be receiving and filing, uh, in the next council meeting, an application from Mr. Blake Eager, uh, that will be shared with all council that we received. Uh, the great news is, we have three applications for planning commission and DDA, all of which are very qualified members. Um, and, uh, recognizing the letter of resignation from Mr. Markham, uh, that we received, we now need to, uh, as council, take action on a seat replacement. That's an appointment for planning commission, uh, to fill Mr. Markham's seat. Um, I would like to just say a couple of things open up, and it would be up to council to make this motion. Uh, number one, um, we have three applicants, which I mentioned is great news, and I'd like to keep all of those applications. Uh, we don't know what the evolution may be, any members that may resign or have circumstances that would prevent them from continuing to participate, so I wanna start with that. I think it's important to keep all applicants in the pool. Um, upon my review of all the applications, uh, I would recommend that council considers, uh, Jim Bilk for the next seat in our planning commission and DDA responsibilities. Uh, you'll see, uh, obviously, the application and, and the why behind that, but I think the, uh, longstanding presence in Gibraltar, uh, the participation that I've seen in relevant hot-topic forums, that he's attended meetings and spoken confidently, constructively, uh, his, his education and professional experience, uh, for those that didn't read or didn't see some of the details in the application. He's a mechanical engineer by trade, but a lot of experience in program management and sales, and working across cross-functional diverse teams to make that happen. So, for the reasons mentioned, I would recommend at this time that we pursue, uh, Mr. Jim Bilk for that planning commission appointment. Again, that's up to council, uh, but keep Mr. Eager and Mr. Reiser's applications, uh, for any future consideration.
So, do we have, we have two planning spots open, right? Or just one?
Just one.
Just one.
Okay. For some reason, I thought there was two. I know there's one on the zoning board, too, right?
Yeah, and a zoning board will be something that we'll have to discuss, this, i- in addition to Mr. Lear's, uh, resignation we filed and received this evening, but, uh, this time where you'll be looking to fill Mr. Markham's seat, who, uh, submitted that resignation. So, it's, it's up to council's action, but again, my recommendation would be a motion to pursue Jim Bilk's, uh, seat on that planning commission and DDA.
Motion to approve Jim Bilk for the seat in planning commission?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Well, uh, Mr. Jim Bilk, if you're watching, um, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, vote on your, uh, on your roll call for the seat of planning commission, and, uh, Mr. Reiser, again, I just wanna thank you so much for everything you've done for the city, and we're gonna keep that application as we future-consider any changes to the planning commission representation. Uh, with that being said, Katie, can you please call roll?
Uh, Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Cosmore.
Yeah.
McNabb.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
All right, great, Jim Bilk, welcome to the planning commission and DDA meeting. Uh, the first meeting, uh, that, uh, Jim will be joining will be on January 16th. Uh, that also coincides with the special use hearing, uh, and then our planning commission and DDA will, will be responsible for, um, electing their new chair and vice chair, given the shift in the representation. So, thank you, very excited about that movement. Um, on, uh, item number B, uh, we have our short-term rental study commission update. Um, I've been referring to study committees, so if you hear those words interchangeably, I refer to committee. But, uh, at the end of the day, council, I, I just wanna, uh, number one, profusely thank Councilwoman Cosmore, uh, and Councilman Molnar, uh, for their participation every step of the way here, and broader council for the discussion on short-term rentals. Um, I won't go into detail, uh, other than to say we had a very productive discussion. Uh, that short-term rental committee, uh, consisted of two council members, myself, uh, Mr. Landis. Uh, we also had, uh, owners of short-term rentals, two of them, and then we have, uh, residents, uh, that represent three residents. Uh, based on, uh, if you recall, Brandon Dix had spoken up about the balanced representation, so we added members to balance that representation, so we now have an even split of stated or voted favorability or lack thereof on the topic. Um, I know council can see this in front of me, but for the residents, uh, our goal of that kickoff meeting, it was held on January 2nd from 5:00 to 6:30, just to kinda walk back. There's a motion to prohibit and a window to comply of January 1st for short-term rentals in the City of Gibraltar and R1. Uh, there was also the motion to pursue this short-term rental study committee, and council felt it was our duty to further explore this topic, um, and I know we've talked about the objectives and the game plan for that, uh, in prior council meetings. Um, at the end of the day, the, the kickoff meeting was incredibly productive because we all put our heads together to say, what information do we need? What action items should we take away from this initial committee discussion? Um, I'm just gonna give you a summary, but rental statistics from the owners, on days used in a calendar year, duration of stays, uh, booking processes, confirmations, review processes for booking and oversight, uh, resident survey inclusion to assess our residents' perspectives, not just the neighbors of the short-term rental previously, but ultimately the broader residents on the presence in our city, booking policies across platforms, uh, any potential proposed language in ordinance or charter, and the steps and timelines for consideration, identification analyses of other city experiences that have both prohibited or allowed short-term rentals. Traverse City was an example brought up in Michigan. Uh, threshold considerations, meaning maximum number, regulation methods, uh, requirements for neighbor endorsement. There's so many good ideas that were flowing, uh, pros and cons of their presence beyond what I talked about in the council meeting previously, inquiry or owner on if, inquiry or, uh, I would say, like, guidance on how it relates to a friend or a family member or a peer staying at the home versus a paid rental. Uh, recommended interviewing of the neighbors. We got a lot of feedback from the public, but like, uh, input on the specific neighbors for the six that were in our city previously, uh, statistics on the broader, uh, police activity in our city beyond just the six short-term rental properties that Chief Tangway. So, long story short, our commitment was to explore this further. We had a really productive discussion. We have a multitude of actions that we're gonna be looking into to gather more information. Uh, I committed to making sure that there's a weekly update to the short-term rental study committee members, uh, just the progress. Some of these are gonna be pretty easy to identify or to investigate, some may take some longer time, and I'll keep council purviewed, uh, every single council meeting and any interim updates. But I just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page on what's transpired in the short-term rental, uh, study committee world. Uh, any questions, comments, feedback? Great. Um, next item up is, it's, uh, performance review time. Um, so I am excited because one of the commitments we had made as a administration was to make sure that we continue the performance review process, uh, for all of our department heads and personnel. Um, I think it's a really important step that our administration currently can take. Um, a couple thoughts there, just for everybody's awareness, uh, council and public. Uh, number one is, uh, in front of you, you'll see the performance evaluation form that was previously used. Uh, so you're gonna see the different, uh, evaluation metrics. For the public, if you haven't seen this, it's administrative management skills, organization and planning, HR management and development, expense, expense management, problem solving, human relation skills, technical competence, professionalism, achievement of objectives and expectations. And each, uh, each of these buckets has a written description as well as a rating from excellent to poor. Um, and it gives us an opportunity to basically survey every single employee of the city that would have a educated perspective on each individual's performance. I'm a big believer in performance accountability. I know we said that from day one, so this will be a great data, uh, exercise to gather said performance. Um, council, this is gonna take place in the month of January. Uh, we will give everybody details on timeline, exact timeline for initiation, exact timeline for results captured deadline, and then ultimately timeline for the analyses to present out as appropriate. Um, so I wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page. Uh, my other, uh, objective in bringing this up was to make sure we all, uh, had an opportunity to weigh in on the performance metrics used. I'll tell you what I'd like council's feedback on, whether tonight or anytime, uh, this week, as we're sitting in the office, is I'd like to basically understand, given the previously used evaluation matrix, is there anything that we would add or change? And the root of my inquiry is because the previous matrix allows us very effective year-over-year comparisons because we used it previously as a city, so we could look to see change over time with a standard set of metrics. But I wanna make sure we're not missing any opportunity to capture input on an individual's performance. I know myself, I have a lot of experience in performance evaluations, uh, in the professional setting. I'm sure all of you have had experience in people management or some level of performance discussion, so let's just take this opportunity to review what was done, and before we deploy this performance evaluation, add anything, subtract anything, adjust anything. So, any initial comment today, and if not, uh, I'd like you to stop by City Hall, give me a call. That goes to the public as well, given what you've just heard this evening, and any suggestions. That goes to the public as well, given what you've just heard this evening, and any suggestions you have before we kick off the performance process.
Yeah, this is really close to what the school district uses.
Yep. I think the good news is, I did a little research on just this alone, in addition to some additional kind of considerations, and to Marcia's point, it's a great way to kind of leverage a standard, almost like a validated tool, if you will, for performance, but I don't want to miss the window to capture any incremental information that we'd like to capture. Katie, Amy, anybody that's Michael, anybody that's been previously a part of this, any feedback or discussions from our department heads on the process?
None at this time.
Okay. Great. Counsel, please reach out, send an email, stop by City Hall if you'd like to suggest any additions, subtractions, or refinements. Public, please use the comment section or reach out to me anytime if you have any suggestions there. The next topic in front of you is the Infrastructure Advisory Committee. I wanted to kind of build on the discussions to date. Counsel, in your packet and my update, just to check in on that item, the goal is to leverage an infrastructure study committee, or advisory committee, to interpret available information on our water, sewage, and roads, and provide recommendations on priorities to address opportunities. It's a high-level goal, but I'll tell you, when we kind of stepped in as a new administration, we wanted to take inventory. A part of your first council packet was a pretty exhaustive summary of all of our asset management plans around infrastructure. I want to commend those in front of us and those that already did a lot of work to put in pieces to the puzzle, such as the two water mains and the redundancy that that established for Gibraltar's water system, so thank you. But the goal here is to provide a nice forum of individuals that can help, again, accomplish that objective that I described. The structure that we propose was two council members, one member of the Planning Commission/DDA, our city administrator, our finance director, our professional engineers, and two members of the public with infrastructure expertise. So tonight, I want to just make sure we could revisit that. Mr. Fonti, who is in the audience, is a nomination for a resident expert to be involved, but I'd like to open up to counsel. Really, the questions that I think are logical are, like, for example, Mr. Cox, our Councilman Cox, is already on our Planning Commission and DDA. I think that'd be a logical council member to participate as an example. So, you know, I'm giving the counsel an opportunity to weigh in here before I bias any kind of discussion, but I think those two names would be logical additions. But counsel, any perspective? The one thing that I will add, too, and I spoke with our DPW, is this doesn't list this in the packet, but I'd like to add at least one DPW member, so I'd like Bill to be involved in that forum, potentially another representative of DPW that he could choose, whether it's a delegate or two representatives in that given meeting. So I wanted to add that, that's not written in the text tonight. So in summary, we would like to have one additional council member proposed beyond Mr. Cox, and any feedback for or against Mr. Cox. Mr. Fonti is a member of the public that I think has been nominated, would be a sound contributor to that forum, but any other members of the public that you think would be good additions to that?
We probably should have a member from the public fill out the applications like we did for the other committees, I would think, so we all know what their expertise is.
Okay. Like, for example, I just saw Mr. Reiser raise his hand as a member of public, so that's a great call-out. So to the public, Mr. Fonti, obviously, has already expressed in written interest, and I've received a nomination for him. Mr. Reiser just opened his, or raised his hand. To the general public out there, can you please send me an email? Counsel, what do you think's the most tangible criteria, or what would we be asking for that resident to submit?
Well, I guess it'd be their background in it.
Yeah, so we can provide this in written form as well, but I think, to put it very simply, to the public that's in the room and to the public that's watching us virtually, my email is mayor@cityofgibraltarmi.gov. So mayor@cityofgibraltarmi.gov, and I'd like you to send myself an email, or any other Michael or Katie, and I'd like the email to, if you're interested in participating in this Infrastructure Advisory Committee, I'd like it to contain three things. One, your name. Two, your address. And three, why you feel you would be a good resident expert to contribute to the infrastructure topic that the city needs. Counsel, do you agree with that approach? And that would allow us to then take Mr. Fonti, Mr. Reiser, and any other applicants we receive for the resident representation. So that's great, that lands that. The only other seat we need to fill is one more council member to participate.
I think Councilman McNabb and Councilman Cox are excellent candidates.
Yes.
Counsel, do you have any objections to those two individuals?
No.
No. I'm in.
Okay. So this is great. So we've landed everything we needed with just the solidification of the resident representation. I think, just to be fair balanced, what I want to do is let counsel choose from all residents that submit. So residents out there, and we'll put up a follow-up, maybe even a post on our Facebook page might be good, Katie. And we can include the email and the application information. This is a really important topic. Infrastructure is our future. And so, residents, we are asking for your help. We got three members that applied for Planning and DDA. Let's keep the momentum going and resident engagement in the city. So we're going to put up a Facebook post. It's going to include email to submit your email application. It's going to ask for your name, your address, and why you're a good fit. And then, to be fair balanced, counsel, resident, your deadline is... Katie, what's our deadline for the next council packet?
Um, January 17th, next Wednesday. Next Thursday, I'm sorry, 18th.
Residents, we sent out our council packets on Thursday, so that would be the Thursday the 18th. So your deadline is noon?
Yes.
By Thursday, January 18th, to submit your application. Counsel, you get to review all residents that apply and choose two.
How many residents are you going to have? We're already going to have Mr. Fonti, right?
There's two, yeah, two residents in total.
Just one more person?
Yeah, but I think, I mean, to be fair balanced, we'll put all applicants that we receive as residents in front of you as counsel.
So, yeah, this is the chance for the residents to get involved in their city. So make sure you're putting in your application and...
Yes, and I think it's a great way to be purviewed to all the information we have around infrastructure, all the asset management plans, all the experts sitting at a table to weigh the future of our infrastructure projects. And Amy can keep us honest on the dollars. Sound fair? All right. My last topic is professional services update. So counsel, I know I sent a email notice to you all, but we received a recommendation to meet with a attorney. That attorney is currently the city attorney for Trenton. I just want to be very clear that this is an introductory and exploratory discussion. We're incredibly grateful for your firm and everything you've done for the City of Gibraltar, period, and continue to represent that, so thank you so much. And just want everybody to be aware that I think it's our duty as a city to fairly look at our professional services. We've done a lot in less than two months together as administration. Our next wave is a deep dive on professional services, beyond the work that's already been done. So the work that's already been done, I'm referring to as like invoice auditing and looking at our processes for review and approvals. So right now, we're going on the list. Our city attorney, we will have discussions with attorney firms. I know I met with you and Randy and let you know that I was receiving nominations and recommendations, and so I'll keep counsel purviewed to all of those discussions. Mr. Molnar joined for that introductory exploratory meeting. Again, nothing was decided upon, nothing was discussed, financials, nothing, just a exploratory conversation to understand different individuals, their firms, where they focus, how they focus, their thoughts. What I'd like to do is make sure that everything we do as a city is always in front of all of our council and always in front of our public. That's why I'm giving you a heads-up, public. That's why I'm giving you a heads-up, counsel, beyond my email. I would recommend a model, so that we don't continue to introduce committee after committee after committee. I'd recommend a model such as this. For each professional service, city attorney, engineer, et cetera, we choose one council member that would be involved in any introductory or exploratory meetings. Then, when we have a shortlist of any services we're looking to evaluate, they all come in front of all council for any decision that's made. Meaning, if you got a list of candidates for engineers, then all of council will be purviewed to it, but one council member would be sitting, in addition to myself, Michael, and other parties, would be sitting in any meetings, preliminary exploration meetings. So, for example, Mr. Molnar joined the meeting with the City of Trenton's attorney, so we had counsel present. And then, any decision or considerations for professional services would then come in front of all of council, meaning council would have all potential firms or service organizations coming in front of them, for which the council member that was involved in any exploratory or introductory discussions could represent any of their perspective, and then all councils purviewed any broader content, questions, comments, feedback. So with that being said, I guess my first question is, is counsel comfortable with Mr. Molnar being involved in those potential city attorney or law firm discussions? The why behind his inclusion was, number one, an expressed interest, and number two, for those that don't know, he did go to law school, so that is his education and training area. But I'm open to any council feedback. And then, number two, what council member would want to be involved in any engineering discussions? I think there's some logical considerations there.
Right, here we go.
So let's start with that tonight, so I guess, let's just, let's cut to the chase and just say that, Mr. Molnar, is there any objections to Mr. Molnar's continued participation as a one-point council member, recognizing that no decision or no information sharing will happen without all of council's purview? Any objections to Mr. Molnar?
No objection.
Marcia, what do you think?
Dave, that's how you want to run that, so that's fine.
Okay. Is that any alternative suggestions? I'm open to whatever you think is best.
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay. So, Councilman Molnar will remain as our legal point council member. For the engineering service review, Councilman Cox seems to be a logical choice, endorsed.
I'd like to volunteer myself.
Any objections to Councilman Cox's role?
Before you get appointed.
Any objections? Okay, let's just, let's start there for this evening. So we got two. We're going to go one, two with that. I want to thank Michael, he's been amazing, you know, somebody who's got a lot of experience in working with these professional services and helping facilitate the reviews and discussions, so thank you.
Hard parts, make sure that it gets, the information gets out to all the council members, that one just doesn't have more privy than the other ones.
100%. And the good news is, that's why I'm flagging it today, there's been no information shared. Again, that first meeting was a recommended connection. It was a lunch meeting, and it was a very general discussion around their experience and mindset. Not a single dollar amount slash workload was discussed. It was just truly introductory and exploratory. That's why I want to send that email immediately to counsel. But we will make sure all council has every piece of information, and that not a single decision or action step is taken without all of council's purview. And that's why I want to make sure we had this discussion this evening, and then had points to keep us abiding by that process. Great. That is, I think, concluding my report this evening, unless there's any questions, comments, or items for me today. All right, council liaisons. Councilman Valentine, talk to us about recreation.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. Saturday, March 30th, is breakfast with the Easter Bunny and the Marshmallow Drop. That's going to be at the Gilthab Community Center. Breakfast is from 9:00 to 11:00. I'm sure that the cooks will be the Gibraltar Fire Department. There's a basket and bike raffle at 11:00 AM. Tickets are going to be $5 a person, three and under are free. Tickets include one bike raffle ticket and one basket raffle ticket. Breakfast tickets and raffle tickets will be sold at the door. The younger kids' egg hunt, one to three years old, will be 11:30 by the pavilion, and the marshmallow drop will be 12:30 at the pavilion. So Saturday, March 30th, breakfast with the Easter Bunny and the marshmallow drop. That's my report.
That's exciting. It's hard to believe how these years fly by. I was just laughing at that when we were planning for 4th of July the other day in the department head meeting. Thank you, Councilman Valentine. Any questions, comments for Councilman Valentine? All right, next up is Councilwoman Cosmore. Talk to us about your areas.
ADW, I have a meeting in a couple weeks, so I don't have a report for that right now. The 33rd District Court, which you guys had seen the memorandum where they just, it was just minor tweaks on the budget, but nothing major, it was just minor. And then, like, that, the court, that one, they only meet like three times a year, so there won't be another meeting for a while. For the Rotary, I wanted to say, they wanted me to say to make sure to thank all the residents for the support that they had last year, because without your support, we couldn't do, make the money to do the things that they do in the city, so they wanted to say thank you. And their next meeting is next Monday at 6 o'clock at the VFW in Rockwood, so please come and join. And for the Kiwanis, we have an open house coming on January 23rd at the community center at 6:30. If you want to come check us out and see what we do, please come, and we'll be working on a service project that day. And we do have an upcoming craft show in March, so we're looking for vendors. So please, you can check out our Facebook page or go to, our Gmail is kcgreaterjib@gmail. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Cosmore. And I will echo the thanks and outreach regarding Rotary and other organizations, so thank you. Appreciate all they do for Gibraltar. Any comments, questions? All right. Next up, Councilwoman Wood. Talk to us about beautification in the Historic Museum.
Okay, we didn't have a January meeting, so I don't have any report. Our next meeting will be February 5th, and we will be talking flowers then. It is 72 days until spring.
Wow.
Just letting everybody know. And that's all I have for beautification. The museum was open yesterday, and we did very well. We had, actually, like, out-of-town people coming, which is kind of nice, you know, like, not out-of-town, like, not out of state, but Royal Oak and some other cities, and I'm thinking, wow, did you even find us? I mean, and even how they knew about us, but that's exciting that people were coming, so...
That's really exciting.
Yeah, so that's it. It was a great day yesterday. That's all I have.
Well, you've done a phenomenal job on both fronts, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments for Councilwoman Wood? Councilman Cox, talk to us about your first Planning Commission and DDA experience.
Well, we approved the site plan for the PFAS treatment facility. Although there's no direct cost to the citizens of Gibraltar, I think it's a good thing that we are, as custodians for the state taxpayers, that we tried to find, we're finding the most efficient way to treat this material. So that got approved through the site plan review. There was a special use that was on discussion that got put off because the hearing wasn't advertised correctly, but that's going to happen at the next Planning Commission meeting this month. And the proposed zoning ordinance changes were tabled from that meeting to the January meeting to have the full quorum in front of us. There was a few of the commissioners that weren't in attendance, so that's my report. Looking forward to the 116 meeting.
Thank you so much. Yep, and that 116 meeting will include our newest addition, Mr. Bilk, and then y'all will be responsible for determining who your chair and vice chair is going to be. Any questions for Councilman Cox? Bless you, Amy.
Bless you.
That was a good one.
Check area.
It's only going to make Councilman McNabb stronger. On that note, Councilman McNabb...
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
No, hopefully I'm okay tomorrow.
Well, for those that haven't heard prior discussions, there's some good news on the weed harvester and the funding, so Councilman McNabb and Michael and the team are working with the county accordingly, so fingers crossed on a successful path there. Councilman Molnar is not with us today, so no words from him. I just want to comment on my SEMCOG appointment. So doing some research, one of the things that came up, we had a discussion today with resident Dominic, I want to thank Dominic, who's a grant writing expert. And so we met with Wade Trim and Dominic. Wade Trim educated me on the funding scouting activity, meaning where grants are based on city council's input. And then Dominic had put up his hand to volunteer to write applications, given his experience in grant application writing, which would save the city money, and he's doing that because he loves Gibraltar. And I just want to make it very clear that one of the priorities that I expressed during that discussion was our pump station. And I know flooding and broader considerations for the city and the pump station need some work, and that was one of the areas we highlighted as a potential lane to consider for grant exploration. Michael, keep me honest, anything else that you wanted to kind of summarize from that discussion today?
FEMA station.
Huh?
The FEMA station.
FEMA? Yeah, go ahead.
Is the pump station you're referring to the application package as related to storm water maintenance at the end of Bayview?
Yes.
Yes, so the, we have old applications and diagrams for a pump station application So, we have old applications and diagrams for a pump station application that was denied by FEMA. Again, that was in reference to the mayor's point of a pump station. Our current pump station, lift station is operational and working fine, but we do want to continue to upgrade that and improve it as necessary.
Thank you so much. So, the good news is, I just want to make counsel aware, I think the broader grant topic is something we can look into more deeply, meaning I love counsel's input, and that's something I'd like to make sure we land, is priority areas. You know, we set a variety of goals for our new administration. We took inventory on a lot of hot topics. The infrastructure study committee or advisory committee will also help provide recommendations. But one thing that I left with from that discussion was, it's our duty to inform Wade Trim and our funding scout as to our priorities, one of which was the pump station as an example. The other was bridges. You know, so there's other topics. So I'd like to make sure that's a topic of discussion for counsel and that y'all weigh in on that beyond our goals that we've established, because once Wade Trim receives guidance, directive, then they can make sure they're scouting in those areas. And then Dominic kindly offered to help pull through, save the city money on the execution of the grant application writing, so that we can get a best chance at securing funding. One of the biggest watchouts that we raised with all parties in the discussion was the need to very clearly bring in Amy and to understand any financial implications, because there's no such thing as free money often, and many monies come with many hooks. And so, we want to be very conscious of anything we explore. So, Amy, you'll be integrally involved in any discussions before any application considerations. Obviously, counsel would weigh in on all that, but just want to give an update on that. That's a, that's a kind of a backdrop, because the SEMCOG General Assembly meeting is March 21st. Mr. Dill, I'm going to talk with you, but as an appointed representative, I want to make sure we're plugging into that effectively. And they also have a SEMCOG database that would allow us to visibly assess grant opportunities. So, I want to give everybody an update. That's all for me. Any questions, discussion on any topic? Yeah, please.
The one question I have is the grant. You guys are going to look. Are they going to be just for infrastructure grants or anything pertaining to any department in the city?
It's...
Because I brought this up before.
So I'm glad you raised it.
Our last grant guide didn't.
I'm glad you raised that. So what I'm hearing from you is there might be some appetite in your lanes, so I'd love for you to...
Have a lot of grants.
So I think that...
Public safety grants, there's a lot of grants.
I think that's the beauty of it. And one of the things that was even brought up was grants, and I don't want to misquote the name, but related to volunteer fire departments and opportunities there. So, department heads will all talk about this intimately. Counsel, want to make sure we're aligned on priorities and the scout can source. But yes, it would be broader than infrastructure.
I have a question too.
Yeah.
Is this something that we're paying in additional to our already service fees, or is this...
Yeah, no additional expenses is our goal. Basically, the guidance I got from Wade Trim was they've sent funding scout reports, which they're going to compile for me, and they were waiting for, this is prior to our sitting in this seat here, they're waiting for guidance on where they should explore, which will then help inform the grant availability, which will then help inform the application process if counsel so chooses.
Perfect.
In the past, we've been paying somebody to write grants. I don't think he's ever written anything for us, but maybe we need to terminate him. It sounds like Dominic's going to do a lot of better job for...
I love your assertiveness on that statement. I think my understanding, and Michael, go ahead, it sounds like you'd like to speak.
So, as it stands, we do have a grant writing person with Wade Trim. Again, he's, brings us, grants to our attention as necessary. And again, it's on counsel to assign him to conduct a grant writing, as those are additional costs to the city and not within the purview. So we've only assigned the one grant to him at this time, which was the High Water Infrastructure Grant, which we did not receive. It was through Eagle.
Yeah, so the, it's important, I thank you for raising it, but the short story is, we'd have to ask for that additional writing, which we would now save through Dominic. The money we've spent is related to the scouting or fund scouting activities, for which they need directive on where they're looking, because they've sent reports and asked for direction previously, but it's up to us to actually provide that direction. So that's going to be a topic, oh, sorry.
So, we keep them the same guy?
So, it's something we'll review in our professional services. Wade Trim is the firm, that's our city planner, Arthur, but some of colleagues of his that are doing the scouting. So I recommend we review it. Again, I'm not here to look at the past, other than to say the guidance I received in my first discussion looking at it today was that they did provide scouting reports previously, and they never got direction on where to look, which would then trigger, trigger the investigation of grant opportunities, which would then, now, with our new resource potentially, without a cost to the city, allow us to pursue that application, thanks to the wonderful raising of hands of Dominic who came in today. So, yes, we'll review. We'll look at all that. Do we get our ROI previously? How is the money spent? What was delivered or not delivered? And we can make that recommendation as counsel.
So, we only going to pay this guy if we direct him to look at a grant. Otherwise, he doesn't get paid.
Yeah, correct. So the scouting reports that I, and again, we'll unwind this all together, but my general understanding is that we paid money to receive scouting. There's been scouting reports sent, but they didn't get direction on double-clicking to the different areas or looking into them further, providing recommendations. So the money we've spent, Amy, there's no intention to spend additional money to that question. And I'd like to look at all the reports. I'll share it with you, I don't have them yet. But we'll look at all the reports. We'll send it to counsel on what we received previously. We can assess that against our priorities as an administration. And before we make any decision on double-clicking, we'll know what the cost implications are, and then we'll have somebody like Dominic who could help us apply without the incremental cost that that application would otherwise produce. So I'm excited about it. It'll be in our professional services review and an area that we'll get more information. I'll share that with counsel. Any further questions, comments? All right, great. With that being said, let's turn over to our city attorney. City attorney, before I get to that, to your synopsis, I just want to say a couple of things. Mr. Fonti, thanks for raising it. We did get a robust legal perspective based on counsel's motion, so I want to start there. What we discussed at our last council meeting, and I know that I'll just speak for myself, the performance and the execution of the city is our priority. We're doing this not for any individual, but for we, the city of Gibraltar. So let's start there. Number two, as somebody who's been sitting in that office just about every single day, I have gotten a good purview from what was an outsider prior to this election to now what is an insider, sitting in the hall. And I want to just, like, tremendously thank our department heads for working their butts off for the city. Seriously. Like, it makes me emotional watching you all deliver. So let's start there. Next topic is, I'm not naive to the fact that we need to make sure we have critical reviews of our operations and all the personnel that make it happen. I just ask that as a counsel, we respect the human element of this process, that we make it very fact-based every step of the way. I know there's a lot of perspectives. I just want everybody to calibrate that, especially to our residents. You know, I care about the city of Gibraltar as much as you do, and we want the best for the city of Gibraltar and the continuity and execution of the operation, and we want to empower people to be the best people they possibly can be in their roles. So let's please handle any discussions with respect and a sympathy for the human element of those discussions, number one, and number two, do our duty in being fact-based and very thorough in any process for which we choose to review any personnel. With that being said, what I said last council meeting, if you recall, was, number one, let's get legal perspective, which counsel motioned on, and you can give us a summary on that today. And number two, let's have a clear documentation of performance accountability, which we just discussed, will happen in January. And on that note, I want to make it clear that if you're a resident or if you're a council member, please come into City Hall every day, and if there's ever an issue or problem, call, email, or walk into that office and address it with that individual. Let's also have the respect as a collective community to have discussions with individuals. Because I know that I've, just like I said last time, been talking to Michael about opportunities, talking to Amy about opportunities. We had debriefs on all city personnel and one-on-ones. So I ask that before we go public and critique or make comments about somebody's performance, ask yourself if I had the discussion with that person? If I had give that person, the supposed expert of that position, a chance to address with me my concerns? I think that's a respectful thing to do and the right thing to do together as a community. So that's performance, and I think it's a critical bucket. And number three is succession planning and the market considerations for which counsel can choose to act. And I know we talked about that, right? Assessing market against any positions that counsel is considering action upon. So, I just want to make sure we're all aligned on that. I just please ask about the human element of any process or public discussions. I ask that we all have the respect for one another as a community to have constructive performance discussions with one another. If I'm doing something wrong, I'm the first one that wants to hear it. And we're in office every single day, and I want to thank the department heads for working their butts off for the city. So with that, we'd love to hear a summary of the legal recommendation.
Okay. With emphasis on the word "summary," our office was asked to provide a legal opinion regarding the several personal service contracts that were entered into between administrators, our chiefs, finance, city administrator, and parks and rec. And we reviewed those and provided our draft opinion here in your packet, which is privileged. The, permit me then, just to summarize the high points, which I think are really the issues everyone's concerned about or interested in. First, your charter controls. Your charter says that the city council, after a 30-day post-election period, has the authority to hire and fire essentially your administrative personnel. They serve at the will and the pleasure of the council. So a majority of the council can make those decisions. Secondly, the, if you review your ordinances, we find that the council, in the past, had several ordinances which were of interest and relevant here. One in particular vested in your finance director, strike that in your city administrator authority to oversee and terminate the finance director. That ordinance is certainly applicable and provides your city administrator with that authority. However, the charter, of course, controls, and if there's any difference in those decisions, the city council's decision is controlling. We try to read the council's, the charter of the city and the council's ordinances and, together, without trying to reject one or the other, try to give them both their meaning unless it's impossible to do so. And that's our opinion on, on that issue of the finance director's tenure. As far as the contracts, again, the city council entered into contracts with these individuals. The charter states that the city council has authority to set the wages and compensation, and these contracts certainly do that. They define the wages and the compensation of the administrators. The contracts went beyond that. They also authorized the mayor to terminate the administrators under certain conditions. They also approved or recognized that the city council could likewise do so. The legal question is, do these have any legal effect? And the answer, short answer is yes, but if there's a conflict, again, the city council's will must prevail. Lastly, what are the consequences of termination? Under your charter, the consequences of termination are that the employee becomes unemployed. There is no further severance plan or package, and your charter does not provide for any such type of package, separation package. The agreements, the contracts state that with regard to your finance director and your city administrator, that if the mayor does terminate, they are entitled to two weeks of severance under that contract. It's our opinion that's enforceable, but it's enforceable only if the mayor terminates and the city council doesn't override that termination or doesn't exercise that power Finally, the police chief has a different, little different term in there. The city council has agreed in that agreement to provide a 30-day notice provision before any termination of the chief of police. Again, this is to be observed unless the city council wants to exercise its charter power to terminate the police, because the police chief serves at the council's will and pleasure. So that's sort of a brief summary. I know there's some, I see some Michigan jerseys trying to bolt through the door here, so I've tried to summarize that and keep that short, Mr. Mayor. But if there's any questions, I'd, I'll be happy to address those.
I really appreciate it. Obviously, counsel, this is quite a thorough summary in front of you. That details a lot of information, but based on the motion and the request for the legal guidance, I think you hopefully have heard pretty clearly that charter takes precedent above all, that counsel and/or the mayor, with some nuances, can choose to terminate any department head under a contract, and that the financial implications, if I heard you correctly, would be two weeks of pay based on the agreement. So obviously, that's a very high-level synopsis, but that seems to be the, the guidance that we're receiving in front of you. So, counsel, I just want to thank you for the thorough legal interpretation, and I want to make sure that everybody had that information. Again, I revert back to the importance of us getting legal perspective, check. I really would like to ask counsel to, again, carefully consider what I've said now twice and for the third time, which is, this city has a lot of work to do. There's very few people that are in that office every day making it happen, and I'm very grateful for those people that are in that office every day making it happen. If there's performance concerns, I'd like to hear about them, and I'd like everybody to have the respect to address them with one another. And as any job or profession would entail, I think we all own our own career, and we should be responsible in doing our duty to make sure we have the right people in the right seats. So if we lead with performance, and if counsel chooses to assess the market, that's their decision. But I just, I cannot emphasize enough the need to do this process right, not rushed. Please think about the bigger picture of Gibraltar and what this Gibraltar needs to execute and have continuity in our operation. And if there's concerns, let's hit them and figure out what we can or can't solve before we make any rash decisions, whatever that direction may be. That's my headspace. Counsel, please.
I heard 30 days a couple of times. What happens after 30 days?
The charter provides that after 30 days, within 30 days of the election, the mayor has certain appointment powers. And if he exercises those or fails to exercise them, it doesn't matter thereafter. The council then has this authority to retain or to terminate or separate from employment, sort of a nicer way of saying it, separate from employment, because the administrators then serve at its will and pleasure. So that's that 30-day criteria. The other 30-day was the chief's special contract, which is a, a notice provision. So, does that answer your question?
And my, my 30-day window is passed.
Yes.
Just to be very clear. Any other questions, comments, discussion required? Okay, great. Thank you so much. City Administrator Landis, floor is yours.
Good evening, mayor, council, public. Short report for you here this evening, just kind of give you an update of where we're at with some of our ongoing projects. The city has been in communication with Eagle for our lead service line replacement earmark through the state of Michigan. We have completed our initial intake forms and are awaiting on Eagle to provide us the official contract for the city of Gibraltar. When received, counsel will need to accept said terms and conditions of the contract. We do know that prevailing wage, as well as the Davis-Bacon Single Audit, apply to these funds. Once received, the city will have until September 2026 to complete the work. We're, again, still working to verify all lead lines within our system, and this grant can help support that as well. We are still looking to hire two part-time DPW staff members, so if anyone would like to join the DPW, please submit an application to the city of Gibraltar. We are reporting on our community rating systems and our Eagle reporting for the year. We are working with our representatives in the DPW building and engineering to do so. Water main work is generally completed, and restoration will resume in the spring. Residents will have your yards back to normal, and the concrete will be fixed by the contractor. We have a ongoing sewer re-lining project, still determining a source of one lead flow off Bayview, but granted, we'll be back in town this week working on parts, Parsons Field and Middle Gibraltar. This is, tend to be scheduled for Thursday and Friday, and will have no impact other than some parking at Parsons. So, everything should be A-OK as it relates to school operations. We have been in commit, in contact with Amy Conway in regards to that. Couple further updates. Our utility bill audits, RFP is up, and I have a following communication with Wayne County Chamber of Commerce as they offer a similar service at a competitive rate, so I will have a meeting this Thursday with them. Next, we have our bridge inspection services. They are up for RFP as well. We have our pre-bid meeting this Friday. Moving on, I have one council action item here this evening. The city meets annually with our insurance carriers with Michigan Municipal League. In this meeting, they review our policies, procedures, and help make recommendations as it relates to city operations. One flag that they did note is updating our distracted driving policy. So enclosed, you're going to find an updated distracted driving policy, and understanding this policy will be critical in every role here in the city. As we were informed, that found to comply is the out, with the outlined information, whether acknowledged or not, may result in denial of claims and coverages for personnel that occur from an automobile incident or accident. Again, this, this is going to be for all state personnel, but the police employees aren't exempt per statute. Again, if, staff, counsel, if you have any questions, please reach out. Additionally, there's a 25-minute video if you have any interest in taking a gander at it. And I'd like counsel to make a motion on this if possible... And I'd like council to make a motion on this if possible, just to, again, receive into our employee personnel handbook, and again, provide that paper trail to MML for our insurance carrying purposes.
I have a question, because you said the police is exempt, is our firemen exempt too, or not?
I will defer to the fire chief on that one, or I'm not sure if it's all public safety or if it's just police. Rich, Chief Tangway, would you have any information?
Under the vehicle code statute of distracted driving, it's emergency vehicles, so it would cover police and fire.
There you go.
Thank you.
But we're going to recommend that our police officers also aren't driving around looking at their cell phones, for sure.
This is for employees, right? So isn't the police and fire part of the employees?
Correct.
Well, okay.
It's pretty stringent, so I was just thinking, you know, understand that there's cell phones, but you still need some kind of communication in those two vehicles if there's something going on.
Absolutely.
So I'm going to make the motion that the distracted driving policy becomes a part of a, our employee manual?
Employee handbook.
Employee handbook.
Second from Councilwoman Cosmore. Any discussion beyond what was already had? Great. Katie, can you call roll, please?
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Well, Administrator Landis, anything further on your end?
Nothing further this time. I have a little bit of unfinished business to talk to you about as well.
Great. I just want to thank City Administrator Landis for the updates and progress on the RFPs, on the infrastructure front, on safety first with the distracted driving, so thank you for everything you're doing. Great. Let's go ahead and turn it over to Clerk Tomasic.
Okay. We have another election upon us. February 27th will be our presidential primary in Michigan. Presidential primary does require you to pick a ballot type that you want to vote, because you have to pick which primary you're voting in, the Democrats' primary or the Republicans' primary. So that, this is that election where you're required to choose one or the other. We now have, this will be our first election where we're implementing early voting. Early voting will take place for this presidential primary starting Saturday, February 17th through Sunday, February 25th. So from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. on those days, you'll be able to vote much exactly like you would on Election Day at the Gibraltar Community Center. That's early voting. Like I said, it's much ran like a normal polling place. And then we still have absentee voting, there's no change to that. If you'd like an absentee ballot, contact me in the clerk's office, and I'll get you set up with that. And then still have Election Day, regular old voting. Polls are open 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. on February 27th. And that's all I have to report.
Well, thanks for all the hard work.
And if you have any questions on it, because I know early voting's going to be confusing, just call me.
Is it always going to be the same for the early voting as the, the regular Election Day?
No. Early voting is 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m.
So are they going to have to be closed down like they are at the other polls? Is you going to have to close down every day like that?
So the difference is, on Election Day, at the close of polls, the machines are tabulated. You get the results on Election Day. Early voting, the machine is shut down and secured nightly, but no results are tabulated until Election Night.
Not left out in the parking lot or anything like that?
Sorry?
Just kidding.
We are going to need a lot more workers.
Yep. This is our first one, so we're, this is going to be a learning process, but I'm confident in it.
I just think Katie's done an absolutely phenomenal job, and I know it takes an army, so it's not just Katie, it's so many.
That's a good shot.
But she does a phenomenal job with elections beyond the broader daily responsibilities. So Katie, hats off to you, thanks for driving the ship.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's all.
Any questions, comments, or Clerk Tomasic? All right, great. Treasurer Arp, what do you got for us?
Good meeting, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to add. Amy's got some more items.
All right, well, without further ado, Finance Director McEwen.
Item A under me is Bills of Reference Number 13. You will see sea urines in there. The two, the sea urines invoices that are in there were the ones that you approved at the previous council meeting, and a berm inspection, which we get reimbursed back for. So I would need a motion to approve Bills of Reference 13, or if anybody has any questions?
Is there a motion to approve Bills of Reference Number 13?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from McNabb, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Cox. Is there a discussion that should be had? I know we've been looking at processes, I want to just thank Amy and many other parties for working with the teams on the process for invoice review and approval, and Councilman Cox, I know you have been part of those discussions, and Councilman Mulnar as well, so thank you all, doing great work. All right, without no further discussion, Katie, can please call roll?
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay, my second item is payroll number 867, 877, 878. Does anybody have any questions or a motion to approve the payroll?
Motion to approve the payroll?
Second.
Oh, is there a motion, sorry?
Oh, I thought somebody already said it, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Cosmore to approve the three payroll items listed in B. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those payroll items? Katie, can you please call roll?
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
Number C is, you spanned the consent agenda, but every quarter, we do a transfer from water into general fund, and that's to help, that's to help shore up like the usage of our DPW workers, our equipment, all of those things that are coming out of general fund and putting it back in it. I have to review all of the DPW worksheets, which they will all tell you that they hate doing. I'm sure Bill can testify to that, but I have to review all of those to come up with the amounts. We do $80,000 for each quarter, and then the fourth quarter, I do a complete review and make sure that it's the correct amount. And for the past few years I've done it, it's been under 80, so, but that's for the water transfer, and I don't know if anybody has any questions, or I just rambled on.
I think Amy and team have been quite thorough. I had a deep dive on her discussion with budget today. This seems to be standard practice, as Amy highlighted, but either we need a motion for you, correct?
Yes.
Great, so she's looking for a motion to take that transfer resolution from water operations to general land fund. Is there a motion from council?
I have a motion.
Motion from McNabb, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Cox. Discussion for Amy, or any questions?
Yeah.
I, I went through this with Katie too, li, last week. We may have a couple ideas to help streamline the process, because she does spend a tremendous amount of time to dissect those sheets, to appropriate them to the right, whether they be water, or local, or major roads, so we're going to work on a process to help with that. But she explained everything to me what was going on, so I feel quite comfortable with it.
Thank you for highlighting a great example of how we can effectively collaborate and dive into issues together or opportunities together, so thanks, Councilman Cox. Any further discussion? Katie, it's roll time.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
And then my second one is the major and local roads one. I usually only do this two times a year, but I'm doing it three times this year because of the DPW pay, pay amounts, so it just makes it easier for me to do it each time there's a raise for them. So I need an approval for this. It's the same thing as the water. I have spreadsheets, I go through all of their, their sheets, and I go through all their time to find out what they've spent on major, local roads, and quantify it into there for the depreciation of the vehicles and for their time.
So Katie, or sorry, Amy would be looking for a motion for a transfer resolution from major and local roads to general fund? Is there a motion by council to approve that transfer resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to transfer the resolution for the major and local roads to general funds.
Councilwoman Cosmore made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cox. Discussion for Amy?
Yes, I'd like to.
Yeah, please.
Amy, where does the money come from that goes into major and local roads?
It comes from major and local roads, and it goes into general fund.
But how does it get into?
How do we get money into major, local roads? We get it through Act 51. So we get Act 51 payments monthly from, for major and local roads, and then we have interest as well that we earn in those accounts. And then this is just a transfer, like, for them, if they, if they mow the side of Gibraltar Road, then that would get, be some of their time that's spent on major roads to reference to, in a sense, like, give us a way to do the transfer. But I have to, I literally have to go through all their things and make sure that they actually did do, do that, so that if I am audited on this, I have to prove that Bill spent 32 hours in September mowing the lawn on, yeah.
Thanks for that, Bill.
Gibraltar Road, any, yep.
Does that help clarify?
Yeah.
Any further questions, comments for Amy? Katie, can you call roll?
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and sorry I picked on you so much, Bill. And then my, my last one is for the Michigan Municipal's Treasures Associate Basic Institute. I did complete year one last year, and I found this to be quite helpful, it was very informative as to the things that go into my job, and I also was able to gain a lot of contacts from other cities to contact if I have any questions for help with things, and I just found it to be very, very helpful. The cost for the course is $599, it's a week-long course, and the hotel's about another $500 to stay there for the week. So I would need approval to do that, and I will also be absent from a council meeting in April in order to attend this.
I'll make a motion that Amy attend the MMTA basic training course for year number two.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think, last year, I remember you coming back saying how much you learned, and when I'm looking through what your, the topics you're covering, so.
Yeah, it's very, very, very helpful. I mean, I did catch COVID last time, so hopefully that doesn't happen.
Hopefully it don't happen this time.
But it was very helpful.
Yeah, I would like to say, this is a strong, informative, and inspiring program, and it is in the city's best interest to send the finance director to this. I would like to throw my support behind her for the continuing education and professional development that she's seeking.
And the more, more we send, send our people to this, the better we get as a city, the more knowledge we learn. I, I am so for taking, you know, training our employees, really getting them trained.
Well said, and, well said to both of you, and I also love, Amy, how you built bridges, like, through the networking and connections that you can then lean on beyond just the point-of-time training, so I'm all in on that. Any further discussion? Call roll, Katie?
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cosmore?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
And then currently, my, at the next council meeting, I hope to have the mid-year budget review for everybody, and then coming in February, March, I will be meeting with all department heads to do the next budget. So I know nobody likes to hear that, but that is the plan, so thank you.
Well, it's a very efficient and effective process because of you, Amy, so thanks for all your work, really appreciate you. Without further ado, Chief Tangway, the floor is yours. I just want to thank you for all of the amazing work. I won't steal your thunder on some of the updates you have, but you and the police and dispatch are doing phenomenal work for this city of Gibraltar, and I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you. Ironically, we jokingly said call out an emergency close to the start of the game, and an emergency just came out, but it's not a fake call. Careful what you ask for, it sounds like. Before you tonight, Mayor and Council, is the Police Department report for December 4th through December 31st, 259 calls for service, 53 written reports, 12 tickets, six arrests, one SRO investigation, and six detective bureau cases. On page two, I'd like to make a couple, or two corrections. There's a police, and, police and dispatch overtime report, says for November, that should say December, and below that also should say December, and that's my mistake, and I apologize. You can see that our dispatch, overtime is still trending down, so that's good. At the top of this page, you also see that, and Mayor and Council received an email from me referencing a school threat. That was a juvenile case. We don't try not to publicize any of that, but unfortunately, the news did get hold of it, so we give them a brief statement about our school resource officers, both responded, both while on vacation, and the case was handled rapidly, swiftly, and we're real thankful for them both coming in. Then, at the end of the report, are some traffic studies we're doing with our speed sign, and the ordinance officer report. And with that, I have nothing further.
Doing great work. Thanks, Chief Tangway.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Well, how about Chief Kane, you want to take us to the next chapter?
Sure. And I'll admit, I was the one that said I was going to tone us both out. I'll take that one for that one. But there's three other people going, so we have to stay. The fire department activity from our last council meeting was, there were 14 rescues, two fires, there were no mutual aids, and there was one auto aid. For those of you that don't remember, our, when I say auto aid, there's five communities in this auto aid. If you've seen around town where we had a fire or something like that, and you've seen odd trucks, the city of Gibraltar, the city of Rockwood, the city of Woodhaven, the city of Flat Rock, and here on Township, all have an agreement that anytime there's a fire, we all get toned out for it. Seems like a lot of other cities have more fires than we do, that's why we go other places, which works out very well. As of the report, we're on call four, well, now it's call six, as just happened today, this year, so. Last year, we ended up with 590 calls for the year. We've been working with KME, the manufacturer of fire truck, to get a few of the miscellaneous things repaired. We will have a loaner when that truck goes out, at no cost to us. We'll have another fire truck here, we'll just put it that way. All of our students passed EMT class, so we'll have three new firefighters coming in.
Congrats.
The fire, the firefighter class that's going on upstairs, you might hear all the doors opening, that's, that's the kids upstairs. What I'm looking for is, just to keep this in everybody's head, this is our first class, first firefighter class here since I've been chief, and when they graduate, I would like to have them and all of us come in at like 6 o'clock that night, you know, 30 minutes before the council meeting, and do a little presentation for them. They're going to be eight months of their life in class to learn all this stuff, so it's a big accomplishment. So I just think it'd be something nice to do in front of them, do a little half-hour presentation for them, and then I'll buy them dinner at the, afterwards, to congratulate them.
I love that.
In the past council meetings, I've been asked about the insurance rating for Gibraltar. Gibraltar is number five on a scale from 1 to 10. Rockwood, Brownstown Township are also five. Trenton is a four. The lower the number, the better. I think this was done prior to our, a lot of things are consideration, the fire department, the water redundancy that we have, so this was probably taken in consideration before we got the new water main in.
Okay.
So maybe it'll stay, maybe it'll drop. Other people make those decisions, so. And this week, I have a meeting with the Coast Guard. A lot of you might remember that I was the only department that, sorry, occupational hazard sirens. If you remember in the past, I was the only fire department along the water in the down river area that responded to the Coast Guard to train with them. I think it's a good thing, they're professionals, they do this every day. So I'm going to meet with them this week with a couple more members on my fire department, and then we will set up a training day when there's ice. So they will, we're either going to do it here or at their facility in Belle Isle, where they train, so that's coming up. And that concludes my report.
Great work, Chief Kane, appreciate it. All in on being there for those students who just keep us in the loop on date and time
A lot of you might remember that I was the only department that, sorry, occupational hazard sirens. If you remember in the past, I was the only fire department along the water in the down river area that responded to the Coast Guard to train with them. I think it's a good thing. They're professionals, they do this every day. So I'm going to meet with them this week with a couple more members on my fire department, and then we will set up a training day when there's ice. So they will, we're either going to do it here or at their facility in Belle Isle where they train, so that's coming up. And that concludes my report.
Great work, Chief Kane. Appreciate it. All in on being there for those students who just keep us in the loop on date and time so we can lock it down. Any questions or comments for Chief Kane?
You're doing a great job.
Yeah. Appreciate you a lot. All right. Parks and Recreation Director Gores.
We did not have a meeting in January. Our next meeting is February 6th at 6:30.
Well, thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Gores? All right. Unfinished business. Michael, you want to make a few comments here?
Yep. I have kind of gone over where we're at with the sewer lining project. We're expecting Granite back in town here at the end of the week for B, first string entitlement ordinance, 421 International Property Maintenance Code. Again, I advise council to highly consider this item. I have requested building again be at the next meeting for a full, quote-unquote, deep dive on the item, though our building official has forwarded me some information as it relates to simply adding carbon monoxide detectors under an ordinance provision and not necessarily going with a full International Property Maintenance Code update within the meantime, as this is a pertinent item here for the city, and I can share some of the information as it relates to stories from neighboring municipalities within the state as it relates to carbon monoxide detectors and not having the IMPC updated. So an ordinance item could also do that, but it is a high priority for the city, and I would advise council to take it very seriously.
I think Administrator Landis is spot on with that one. Just to level set everybody, if you didn't have the background, kind of reference mindset, this is the code that was put in front of us, and the ask from council was, can you help us understand the line-by-line changes as opposed to the cookie cutter application, which I wholeheartedly agree. We're waiting for that line-by-line analyses. There's been another example of carbon monoxide risk, right? That's one element that Administrator Landis is soundly and effectively putting in front of you to consider in the interim if we can't get resolution on the line-by-line to make sure we're covering that carbon monoxide, for which she'll follow up with information. So thank you, Administrator Landis. I think you're spot on with that. Hopefully, we see them at the next council meeting with that line-by-line comparison.